To whatever.
Whoever's willing to work for that wage at that place.
I want to make some money in the restaurant business crepes.
Is that right?
That's the way to go. Let me do that crepe, it costs like 25 cents. So now we're at staff reports.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, two items. First, I want to introduce John Baker, who's here, sat through your meeting tonight. John is an intern for us. He's working on some economic development issues as well as some other assignments that we've given him during the summer. He is a recent master's in public administration graduate from San Francisco State University.
And how long is John going to be with us?
Well, certainly for the summer.
Next week.
Well, see how long we're paying him so much that, you know. Yeah, can time and a half. Just the inside joke is he, it's an unpaid internship, so. Now, the second item is just to let you know that we are projecting that we will have the draft environmental impact report for the Baylands out in early September. And that will be then out for 120 days comment period. And so I would anticipate that the comment period will probably end sometime in January. And then we'll go from there. That's the two items I have.
Early September, okay. How confident are you, Clay?
I'm as confident as my community development director is. I told, I put him on the spot today. I said, "Give me a time, but don't," you know. That you're, that he's confident with. So he told me early September.
Okay. All right, Mayor, Council matters. So we've been away for a while. We've had some subcommittee meetings.
Well, you and I met quite a few times.
We have.
I think you kind of delineated a lot of it in your staff report.
Your report.
You know, so, you know, about the Caltrain. You met with them. Caltrain folks on the signage and Bill Cliff and I think that's a good idea to bring it forward to the council and.
Does that Caltrain meeting has to do with economic development?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll generate money for the.
You're talking about the billboard, right?
Billboard, yeah.
Okay.
Electronic billboard.
Yeah. And, you know, I mean, it's kind of twofold. One, it helps provide a sustainable source of revenue for Caltrain. The other is it gives us quite a bit of money. Plus, we can also advertise as part of, you know, whatever contract that we would do if this is something that we would want to do. I mean, you could advertise the farmer's market or if we were going to do an event.
Yeah. The good part is it's not going to be any light noise for the community because it's kind of shielded with the mountain where they want to put it. And that's probably the best part, you know.
Yeah, also the technology of billboard lights, you know, of course, when they come before the council, you'll see it. It's, you know, it's nothing like the one that was out at Candlestick. Man, I think it'd light up my bedroom. I mean, it's brutal. These ones, they don't.
They can turn the intensity down.
Yeah, that light pollution, you know, it's just, you've seen them.
They can regulate the intensity.
Yeah.
That's what it is. They can regulate the intensity down at nighttime so that it doesn't.
And why have they picked Brisbane for this?
They're doing, Brisbane, South San Francisco, San Mateo, and Redwood City, is that correct?
Yeah, just, it's along the Caltrain corridor where they have public right-of-way.
And, okay, but this is coming, would come before the council.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I'm just, I must have missed the memo.
No, it said.
It was in Clay's.
In a weekly report.
Okay.
So are they doing another Burlingame area?
No, I think you're correct. San Mateo, South San Francisco, Redwood City, and then I think there's a couple in Clara County also.
So we, it's only being seen from Caltrain?
No, no, no.
No, off the freeway.
101.
It's on the Caltrain corridor in their right-of-way, but I think what they're trying to get is 101.
Car traffic.
Car traffic.
So how much they make and how much we make?
They, what we, what, based on what they have suggested as the business arrangement, which again is something we would have to agree to, they said that conservatively they anticipated around 150,000 a year.
For us.
For us.
Then maybe what, I don't know.
Yeah, this is.
Four or 500,000, who knows?
I, the number I got the last time we met with them was that they're trying to do about 20% of their structural deficit, which I think was 10 million. So they're looking at maybe generating $2 million for all these boards up and down the two county corridor.
The reason I'm asking is how much they're making, for example, from the Brisbane? And how much of it are we getting? Is that 20%? Are we getting 30%, 50%?
Those are, I'm going to have them come and make a presentation to you on August 27th, if that's the date that you choose to meet next. And we'll have them prep to answer all those questions.
Yeah, this is just an update for all of you. This is what was discussed in the meeting. And so we thought it was prudent just to mention it and then to have them come back.
Our other subcommittee, we met with the owners of the current property of where VWR is, and they indicated that they will be out by the end of December. But they also indicated that they're leased until 2014, till December. So they have 24 months, but they really can't do anything with it because VWR would own the lease and they would have that two-year option to sublease it or whatever. And the guy is really reluctant to talk about doing anything, you know, or impeding on that because he thinks that the fear that they would try and get out of the lease, and they may try and buy out of it or whatever, but, you know. But the thing is, they don't owe any debt whatsoever on that property, which is good. And so, you know, we talked about various things that they may be doing, but different options, you know, that we could do with the chamber, you know, ourselves, you know, aside from them. But he really doesn't have any access to the building, can't advertise it or do anything because they would still own that, own the lease for two years. And then they also presented some futuristic stuff. They wanted to look at some plans and were looking at doing a campus-type thing if they decided to move forward with that, but all the financing would be in place. They had a kind of preliminary sketch and we just viewed it and gave them some feedback.
So who are the owners?
Lawrence Freeman is the representative.
Yeah, Lawrence Freeman is the individual we've been dealing with. I can't remember the name of his company.
Yeah. Yeah, it was a, you know, it was a reach out to us to say that, you know, here's the status of the situation. And, I mean, they, they would, they would prefer to have someone, you know, sign a lease today and rent out the building for 10 years or longer. I mean, that, they're very conservative. But they also know that they, they need to keep their options open. Like Clark was saying, they can't aggressively try and get a new tenant in there because they want to keep collecting the money from VWR.
So they're a local company or what?
Yeah, they're local.
Yeah.
In the Bay Area.
So, yeah, but they.
San Francisco, they've been around for a while, so.
But they've also.
They've owned that building since almost the beginning.
In case the, you know, the economy changes and market conditions are, as such, where a company would want to put in a campus, I think it was six buildings, that they, you know, they would, they'd like to present that to the city as well as an option. So, but I don't think we'll see anything from them for a while. So we just thought we'd share that with you. But it was good, it was actually a really good conversation. He was very pro-Brisbane and he wanted to be a good partner with the city. So that was nice to see.
So we left them with, you know, meeting on a semi-annual basis, just kind of check-in, update and stuff like that and see where.
Every six months.
You know, where we're at, where they're at.
Okay, good.
Yeah. And then we also had the meeting with the two-by-two.
Oh, yeah, yeah, with the school board.
Yes.
And that.
Elementary school board?
Yeah. BES.
About?
Brisbane School.
About and what is the?
It was more focused on high school, actually. I mean, well, we did talk about the things that we discussed during the budget hearing. And they really didn't want to let loose of the field, you know, give up on a field, you know, but at the same time, you know, what their budgetary constraints are, you know, so they have a high use of it. What was the other thing?
We did talk about the crossing guard and, yeah, you know, that's a discussion for us, but we were thinking that, you know, since there hasn't been any accidents and we have a pretty stable person doing the duties, that maybe we should leave it in place.
One of the things they're going to look at, though, is maybe being able to help fund it through, was it C-KAG? C-KAG funding, I think it is. We talked about that, looking at getting some funding that would, I think it had to do with safe routes to school through C-KAG. And that, well, maybe, you weren't part of that conversation.
I hope that happens.
Yeah.
I don't think that they would do that because then just imagine all the 21 school districts and each school district would have average of what, 10?
Well, we don't know if it falls into that category, and that was something that they were going to research, so. But, you know, we kind of really kind of ended up coming to consensus that the, that the guy there does really do a good job and that because of the high traffic that goes through that, that it really is a safety issue, you know, of having, you know, because we talked about, Terry, when you were discussing, well, when we were kids, you know, you say, you know, and then, you know, everybody was saying, yeah, but then, back then, there was a hell of a lot less cars too because generally only one, one car family. Now it's like, you know, 20 car families and everybody drives once he turns 10 years old, so it seems that way anyway.
And we, you know, like what I was saying, a lot of the conversation was about unification. And the school district is not interested in pursuing that route. They gave their reasons and, you know, and we're council members, we don't, we can't tell them what to do. You know, this is their responsibility and.
So that's with Bay Shore Elementary?
No.
Or with the high school district? What's unification you're talking about?
Well, unification of the, the school district as it is right now. So Brisbane, parts of South San Francisco and.
Including the high school.
Including the high school.
Including the high school.
Yeah.
That kind of unification.
A K through 12 unification, yeah.
Yeah, so they opted, yeah, they didn't want to go that route. We did talk about the merge. They seem to be very keen on going in that direction, but they feel that they need more information.
Merge with Bay Shores.
Yeah, I mean, they did the study and of course the study was not very informative. So they're waiting for more information to then make a decision with that. The high school group was in attendance.
Charter high school.
Charter high school group. And they have been approved by the Summit School to, they, they're, they've just finished writing their charter. They're taking the proper steps to go through the county process. And we'll see what happens with that. I did reach out to Michael Barnes to give the council an update on the status of the charter school and.
Is he the one doing it or you see all, with partner or something?
He's the resident of the nonprofit group.
Oh, good.
So, so he, he says he will think about it and we'll see if, if they come before the council and give us that update and, you know, we'll take it from there. I think that was it. Terry, did you have any meetings?
I had a BB-CAG meeting.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
BB-CAG meeting was interesting. We got a report on the Schleglock site and a report from the Water Resources Board on the Kinder Morgan tank farm. I think the report on the Schleg site was interesting and it talked about how much more testing they need to do and that they're still in remediation. The Kinder Morgan tank report was a little less easy to follow. I think that I really need to see the disc on what their report was based on because it was sort of hard to believe that there's no, that the pollution level there is low and really doesn't need. She didn't seem very worried about the amount of discharge from that site.
Who is she?
You know, I never got.
She actually worked for the water. And you're saying that the water board's scope of the.
What's her?
Scope of the, the order. It includes some things. So she's relatively new, new engineer for the water board, so there's some things that she maybe historically didn't know. I guess it had to do with MTBE, you know, that they had found that there's a certain level of contamination, you know, from the fueling station out there when California was adding MTBE in there. And it's a highly mobile agent, aggressive agent. It's also, you know, high carcinogen, we found out, and that it goes towards groundwater and stuff. They were finding some of it on surface water, but there was, that's where it was a concern and saying, well, finding it on surface water after it rains means it's still present, you know. But they, for some reason, don't have a high concern of that. So it was pretty, pretty interesting, you know. It was, created a lot of, probably more questions than answers to update because everybody, and you know how Brisbane is and this kind of poor lady didn't know what to do. I mean, well, she answered pretty well, actually. I thought she handled it pretty well, you know, but she's just giving the facts, you know.
And she, she did have a little bit of contention because the representative from the landfill area was there. And so some of her reports blamed the runoff toxins on the landfill, which the person from that portion.
UPC.
UPC wanted to contest it and this was a report, not a hearing. So it was, it, it did ask more questions than it answered.
Is she coming back?
I'm not sure when she's scheduled back.
All right. Okay, next up is designation of voting delegates and alternates for Leo California City's annual.
How we did this?
Yeah, why is this guy back? We thought.
Because we didn't agree on it, on who was going to, so we tabled it because we needed to discuss it.
Oh, I thought he wanted to go.
Cliff said he was going and I thought Ray was going and then.
Yeah, I was going.
And that's it. And that's the voting delegates, ding, ding, ding. I'm not going.
Guess we got it.
I'm not going.
Mayor, mayor pro temp and then.
That's what I understood.
Then, really, that's it. I mean, it was really.
No, no, you're right.
I'm not sure what happened. I thought it was.
No, because he had not signed up. He waited and he did it late because he, he had not decided.
Thank you, Sabby. No, that was just.
No, that's true.
It wasn't, I didn't, I had, I had, I wanted to go all along, but now we got it settled and we're all good. So, let's see, consider, it's letter C, consider setting dates for council meeting dates, review list of issues coming out of the budget review process.
I have some questions.
Why don't we get staff report from Clay?
Okay, so this is in response to the conversation we had during the budget season and a number of items that are all fiscally related. Proposal is to do a couple different workshops through the months of September and October. And then we have a couple items that will come back to the council and a regular session on the 17th of, of September. There's a couple items that are going to be studied in council subcommittees. And then, of course, you had already referred the Parks and Rec costing and fees to the commission, and so they will be reviewing that and making recommendation back to the council sometime later this year.
Yeah, all these dates look good for me.
Except September 10th for me.
September 10th does not work for you?
No. I'm wondering if you could do it on the 11th.
That would be a Tuesday.
Right, because you have another day that is Tuesday.
Counsel, please drums.
911.
We, Stewart indicates that the Open Space Committee does have a meeting scheduled that evening.
For September 11?
Yeah.
Okay, can I ask you another question? Over here you have August 27. Does that mean August 6th and 20th? We're not meeting, we don't have any meeting in August?
Right, there would be no meeting until August 27.
Okay, and then there was October 9. It says, is October 9 Monday?
That's a Tuesday.
Tuesday, what happens to Monday, October?
It's a holiday.
Columbus Day?
Yes.
That's a holiday?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, that September 10 is, I would not.
I'll be out of the country the 24th, 1st, and 9th.
Ooh.
In September?
Yes.
Okay, the 20th.
September 24th, October 1st, and October 9th. I was assuming I would miss one meeting, not three. But.
Okay.
Well, we should do the same we did for July.
When do you go on vacation, Terry?
I leave on September 21st and come back on October 13th.
Okay, so I've got a calendar, see how that works. Okay, so you make the 17th and.
I had assumed I'd be missing the, the one October meeting, not the two workshops.
Right.
Yep.
So, I mean, we can just, we basically can push the calendar back to latter part of October and into November.
I think that's fine.
Sure.
And then, so we won't do, correct me if I'm wrong here, but we would not do September 10th, September 24th, or October 9th?
Right.
All right, now we could choose alternative days to kind of work around your schedules.
Well, I mean, I mean, mine is that I'm gone for, for three weeks and so that's a three-week period that there's not really moving dates for.
Yeah, I was just thinking like maybe, you know, a couple days after September 17.
So you're just, you're talking about Clay just moving the workshop into November? The workshops?
Right.
Because Debbie won't be here the 10th and Terry won't be here the 24th or 9th.
Right.
But we could still have a regular meeting on October 1st.
Right, because, yeah, I was here the whole July, I couldn't go anywhere.
If I, if I miss a meeting, I.
What about having, what about taking the September 10th workshop?
That's why I said make it 11th, I'm okay.
And make it some other day before Terry leaves.
Well, we could do the 12th, which would be Wednesday without conflicting with any other city meetings.
So who's going to open, oh, yeah, two of you going to open space.
No, nobody. It's just that Stewart's going to be there and Open Space Ecology has their meeting here.
Yeah.
You guys want to go the 12th?
It's okay.
Okay.
12's fine.
So we'll do.
Wait, 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 before I'm sorry.
September 12.
September 12, Wednesday, September 12.
Right. September 12. Yeah, I could do that.
And then September 24th, move it to November?
Well, we could do, we could do the 2nd, no, Terry, you said, no, we could do it October 22nd.
Right.
So we do, September 24th will become October 22nd.
And then October 9th would be.
Actually, I think we've got a 5th Monday of October.
29.
So we could do the 29th.
29th.
Of October.
Of October. So October 9th now becomes October 20th.
October 1st stays as it, September 24th becomes October 22nd.
So we'll do October.
Right.
So we'll be off October 9th, so we'll do four meetings in October.
Correct.
Okay.
Unless you want to move one of the Octobers to November.
No, let's just do it.
Want to have a week, a break?
We should really get it done so we don't have to worry about November holidays and.
Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Yeah, then you get into, yeah. I think it's better this way.
Yeah.
Go with this, okay?
We'll send out a date.
Yeah, we'll revise this and send it out.
We're punch drunk, we'll let you know, I guess.
Yeah. Okay, good. Okay, review for polls, council meeting, okay, we're sort of good there. All communications. John, you're good? All right. Done. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn to the successor agency meeting?
So we.
In, wait, wait, in memory.
Can you, I just want to acknowledge.
You're going to adjourn in memory?
So adjourn in memory of Ray Nowakowski, Ben Hodge, Tommy Gonzalez, and Dan Backer, oh, Don, and Don Backer. All right, so I need a motion.
We just did.
Do we, do we already do it?
Already did, yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought you pulled it back. Okay, all in favor?
I had those names.
Yeah, okay, good. All right.
Excuse me.
Motion to extend meeting for 11:30.
Me here.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, let's go to 12.
Don't get carried away now.
Wrong answer.
Sorry, Betsy. Bob's over there going, "Thanks a lot, Lisa." That's what happened, that's what happened when you were second in charge. You get delegated.
All right, so real call.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Thanks, good. All right, so new business, consider adoption of the reorganized obligation payment schedule for the period of January through June 2013. Do we have staff report?
Yes, we do.
That's...
It's, our wonderful state legislature passed a redevelopment dissolution unwind trailer bill on June 27th, which institutes a bunch of new things we get to do. One of them is that we must pass or submit the revised or the required recognized obligation payment schedule to the Department of Finance by September 1st and it has to go before the Oversight Board and must be approved by resolution from them before we can do that. Thus, we have to get this, this organized, or get this done. This is for the period of January 2013 to June of 2013. It's got the debt service payments on it that will be required to be paid by then. And the only new thing on it would be that we now have to have an, let's see, they call it a, a review. It's, we must hire a licensed accountant who is experienced in local government to review our housing and our redevelopment things. And, uh, that, basically it's an audit, so we have estimated that it will probably cost about $10,000. The trick is finding an auditor who's willing to do it. Our current auditors have already said they prefer not to. We have contacted the auditors who did the, the understanding for the county, that the audit that the county had to have done. And they were looking into it and are supposed to get back to us this week. Some of the other things that AB 1484 gives us is that, once we jump through all the hoops for, for the Department of Finance, they will issue a finding of completion. And once we have that in hand, we can then take to the Oversight Board any loan agreements between the city and the agency and they might consider letting us collect on that in a very drawn out, interesting formula. But in the meantime, what we really need is, is the ROPS approved so that we can take it to the Oversight Board.
Thank you, Betsy. Laura?
Some semantical stuff. It's AB 1X, right? Not AB X1, AB 1X 26?
It could be. I would have to look it up.
Yeah, it is.
Well, the latest one is AB 1484, so...
Yeah, and maybe what we want to do is carry that forward too on the spreadsheet because we have per AB 26 and that's a total different, uh...
Well, the, this form was sent to us by the Department of Finance, so I'm assuming that they know what they're talking about.
Really? You know what happens when you assume?
Yes, right.
Especially about the department.
Right, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to kick it back because it wasn't on their form.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So if they're wrong, they will live with their, their wrongness.
They might kick, kick it back because they're saying that, hey, your form's incorrect, you should...
Well, it's from their website.
Okay, all right. Well, you might want to do a cover letter.
All right.
Or at least look up AB 26 and, you know, might have a total different meaning. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, we, we can footnote on this.
Yeah.
That it's for AB 1X.
1X 26. It's just my semantical comments.
Yeah, no, I know, I have a question too, from me. I think we got this report from the city manager about some of the provisions of 1484.
Yes.
Uh, and it refers to what you were just saying about maybe we can actually get repayment of loans that we actually made, the redevelopment agency, particularly, of course, the Marina loan is the most substantial one. And, and then there's some kind of, as you said, complicated formula, which they will allow after they approve it, so forth and so on. Could that all happen before January 1st, 2013?
No.
Reason I asked that, you couldn't?
No.
I guess...
The reason I asked the question is, you know, suppose it could happen or there's some possibility that it might happen, then shouldn't it be on here? That's my question.
So for AB 1484, you cannot start repaying yourself until fiscal year 2014.
Okay.
But based on what we have from the Oversight Committee previously, we left these items on this one without any repayment.
Right.
The formula for repayment is you can, you can repay yourself based on collecting 50% of the growth in increment between 2013, 14 and 2012, 13. However, 20% of that 50% would need to go to low mod housing. So you can imagine, and then the first...
Which they, of course, wiped out.
Well, what, 1484 put it back in. So therefore, and the other thing that they did...
That doesn't make any sense to me, please explain.
1484 allows the, the low mod housing, the successor agency low mod housing, which we have. So that keeps the successor agency low mod housing intact. Also, you were already...
Well, we had to distribute that money.
Okay, can I try this?
Sure.
What, what they're going to do is they're going to go in and sweep the fund.
Yeah.
Okay, and so everything that we got in it is going to go and it's going to go back to the underlying agents, entities.
Okay.
And then from then going forward, they kind of create this interesting formula of how you can start putting money back into it, in which case we will be able to keep that. So first they take it all away and then they create a formula going forward.
Which in a subsequent year they'll take away again.
Uh, well, um, maybe, maybe not. Because, I mean, I, I think the reason, I think the reason this happened was, was as Senator Lee, Lee Lin Yee stated to us, um, which I think was, was spot on in terms of what's happened up there, is that they marked this bill up for whatever billions of dollars that they marked it up in the, as a revenue in the state budget. So they're gathering every dollar they can to make that mark. Then, in the meantime, 1484 got lobbied heavily by the affordable housing advocates in the state and that's why I think you see this formula, this kind of arcane formula going forward that actually starts putting some money back into, um, housing. So my guess is that will probably stick, at least for now, um, because they're feeling, you know, they're feeling that pressure as well. But it's, 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 it's a goofy system at best because, I mean, they're going to, you know, take all the money away, you know, go into your bank account and take everything away from me and then give you this kind of strange formula where you can get money into the low mod housing fund based on loans that were owed you and then you have to take a certain percentage of that and put it into the, into this fund. I mean, yeah.
They're hoping the world ends in 2012, right?
I think the one thing is just, dude, I, I think you can figure, I mean, the sanity I get in this is trying to figure out what the politics of it were because then I can understand what, what we end up with. But in terms of, you know, the layperson looking at it and saying, does this make any sense? Not, not a lot.
Okay, so none of that can happen until 2014, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what Stuart was talking about, yeah.
So that's why we don't have anything other than, we just put them there as the obligation, but we don't have any payment.
Right, and the first obligation we have to pay back is the, is a loan to the low mod housing fund. Which is a little, which is right around a million dollars.
Right.
So that's the first payment, that, that's the first thing we have to pay back before we can pay back the city's loans. So it's going to take us a while.
Is that also in the law?
Hmm?
Is that in the law?
Yes. So it's going to take us a while to get to the point where we can pay back the city for the loans that, that the city made to the redevelopment agency.
Okay.
The interesting quirk in this though is, is that, you know, we had these payments due to the city, um, from the, um, RDA 2 and from the Marina Fund, but we hadn't established a repayment schedule, so now we're actually going to have a repayment schedule. Granted, it's going to be a very slow and long one to get to, but we will, you know, assuming that we can get through the, the system and through the process and DOF ultimately approves it, we can book it as part of our, uh, fund balances and we can have a repayment schedule that, uh, you know, will get paid at, at some point in time and, you know, growth out at Sierra Point will help. And then, of course, when the bonds get paid off and there's funds available to, to repay the past loans, that's when it will probably take place, which is probably going to outlive all of us in terms of our, our tenures here, but at least it's something, you know, for the city down the line.
Right. Okay. So then we should, uh, move adoption of the recognized obligation payment schedule for January, June 2013?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move adoption of, um, successor agency minutes of June 11th and June 18th, 2012.
Have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
I...
I want to abstain on 18th.
You're abstaining on the 18th?
Yeah, that wasn't you.
Right, 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 right.
Uh, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Now I'm on it.